Okay, I'd like to call to order the planning commission meeting February twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty. It is six thirty-two. Make a determination of quorum. See through there. Okay, we're gonna do elections of office. All those in favor? Nomination for Vice Chair Kalunian. Fifteen lot eighty-six point one, zone RR five rural residential on Flat River Road. And I get a motion to ratify that decision.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to ratify the decision made on January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty, for the preliminary plan approval of the Tonigat Realty Platte.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Kalunian. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kenny. Any discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number seven. We'll wait for Mr. Anderson to come back. Sixty-five lot eleven. That's zone VRC.
Good evening, my name is Christian Tracy. I'm representing Lou Van Grumman, proposing to offer it because it is a kennel addition. They are planning on operating from nine to four Tuesday through state work on Mondays as well, given that they're trying to feel out their clientele. They're planning on, and overly, or that I would ask. The only thing that I saw for the, for this situation, and I know that the kennel permit also had situation.
Vehicles adjacent. All utilities are pre-existing. The surrounding properties are staff's report into my recommendation.
Okay, I have a favorable recommendation by Mr. Kenny. Do I hear a slot?
Non-conforming structure. That is the current non-conforming structure. There can, there-
Any questions from the board?
So use part in a dimensional variance. Was there consideration to go on like, is there any way around this? If you built in the back of the house with-
The, the manner that the, the boundary line borders the building, there's really no way to, um, there's just-
Okay, thank you. You answered my question.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. Operative Housing Corporation, Coventry AP, safety, welfare, morals.
For the special use permit by Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mattson. Any discussion? All those in favor? Action. Request from Attorney Kyle Zamborano for an amendment to the declaration of- Did I skip one? Oh, I'm sorry. Seven-three, recommendation to zoning for a special use permit for the COD addition. Owner Ronald M. COD in Marguerite Colgan. Applicant C Wheaton Construction, CEO Chris Wheaton. The applicant is proposing to construct a twenty-six by thirty-eight garage with a second-floor in-law apartment attached to your existing house via a proposed mudroom. AP three-twenty-three lot one-oh-five, zone RR three, rural residential, and the address is twelve sixteen Town Farm Road. Anybody here? There you go. Go ahead.
Chris Wheaton. Um, the applicant's looking to-
Can you split the microphone up?
Sorry. I'm Chris Wheaton. The applicant's looking to build a, a new garage with an in-law apartment above. We need a special use variance, a special use permit in order to construct said in-law apartment.
I have a question on the septic. Will you have to get a new septic?
Well, I'll, um, I'll make sure that we meet all ISDS requirements in order to-
Okay.
-meet the bedroom sizes required and also whatever stormwater management system I need for the added square footage of the roof surface area as well.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Do you know what they have there now? I mean, is it a septic system?
I haven't gotten the ISDS paperwork yet. I have my excavator for, I have a foundation-only permit. I have my excavator going there and he's gonna do an inspection on the existing septic and tell me what I need to do in order to accommodate the amount of bedrooms.
So it's a second-floor in-law apartment, right?
Correct.
That's all I have. Any other questions from the board members? Hearing none. I'll take a motion for a special use permit, recommendation to zoning.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make, whoops. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. Uh, favorable motion for a special use permit to construct a twenty-six by twenty-eight garage with a second-floor in-law apartment attached to existing house via proposed mudroom. Coventry AP three-two-three, lot one-oh-five, zone RR three, residential rural at twelve sixteen Town Farm Road. The property has permanent access to the public street and has an existing driveway and a proposed three-car garage. The property has all-street parking for a minimum of six vehicles. Property has adequate space for storage of trash receptacles and a room for trash pickup. Utilities are pre-existing. The adjacent properties are single-family resident uses. The property is consistent with the comprehensive plan. If the applicant is issued a special use permit, then this project should have no detrimental impacts to public health, safety, welfare, or morals. I'd also like to recommend incorporating the staff's report into my recommendation.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Kenny. I have a second by Mr. Reyes. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to, um, see if the, if the board would consider incorporating into the motion that they secure the necessary ISDS approval.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have no problem with that. I'd like to amend my emotion, my motion to ensure that the owners and contractor procure the correct ISDS needed to support the additional number of bedrooms.
Okay, motion has been amended. Second amended. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now we can get to the next one. Okay, number eight, new business for discussion and interaction. Request from Attorney Kyle Zamborano for an amendment to the declaration of restrictions and protective covenants and easements for the Pine Ridge Homeowners Association. Anybody here? How you doing?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Kyle Zamborano. I'm a resident of Coventry Thirty Timber Trail. I'm here on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Homeowners Association at Pine Ridge. The builder handed over the, the homeowners association to the homeowners approximately eighteen months ago, maybe a little bit more. We are, the homeowners are, are trying to get up and going and run the association. In doing so, they looked at the declaration which established the homeowners association and thought perhaps they may want to make some relatively straightforward changes in terms of whether or not homeowners might be able to have vinyl fencing. In fact, many homeowners already do have vinyl fencing, except for the fact that the declaration as it currently exists doesn't permit that. As it currently stands, you gentlemen have the exclusive power to tell the homeowners association whether or not it can amend the declaration in any respect, including relatively minor items like fencing. I'm here before you today to, to, to change that, which I think would be beneficial not only to us and in Pine Ridge, but also to you all, to not clutter up your, your busy agenda with every time we wanna change every little thing with respect to the declaration. I, I've worked with the town planner and the town attorney to, to come up with something that I think is relatively reasonable in terms of an amendment to the declaration that specifies that as for certain provisions within the declaration, those related to landscaping, fencing and hedging, trees, lawn ornaments, antennas, auto boats and trailers, animals, obligations to repair and rebuild, restrictions during construction, and specifics regarding the homeowners association itself, including membership voting rights and amendments, that we be able, the homeowners association be able to amend that on their own accord, per vote amongst the homeowners and not have to come before you all every single time they want to change that, those provisions. With the, except to the, with, with respect to the balance of the declaration, the rest of the provisions, you all will still continue to control that. We won't be able to amend that without coming before you. But I respectfully request that you allow us to enter this first amended declaration, give us some leeway to, and unilateral authority in order to amend the declaration, and we'll record this against the chain title of all the, all the homes in, in Pine Ridge.
And nobody in the association's had any problems with change, the changes?
Your, uh, your exact, uh, I should've mentioned that. I apologize. Um, we had a, we had a meeting amongst, um, the homeowners. Everyone had notice of that meeting and we talked through these issues and they, they saw this amendment. And also I've provided notice to all the homeowners of this particular meeting and to my knowledge, no one is, no one is here. I, I know of no opposition amongst my neighbors to, to the first amended declaration.
Okay. Any other questions from any board members?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. So these changes to the, to the homeowners association, how, and this is more a question to the board, how are we to, I don't know, make sure that whatever they're changing here does not go against what the town's rules and regulations are? For instance, I just look at the one, animals. No animals, livestock or poultry of any kind shall be raised or bred, kept or any lot except for two pets, dogs or cats, may be kept. No kennels shall be constructed, maintained on the premises. No dog runs or pens for continuous confinement and restraint of pets are prohibited. So how do we, as a board, ensure that all of a sudden now we don't have a bunch of kennels being brought up over there? And how do-
You can answer that if you want.
If you under, if you understand my question, that, that goes for all of the things you have yellowed here.
I, I, I do appreciate the question. I think the, by and large, uh, the provisions that we've identified as, as those that we can amend of our own right are, are those that, um, those worries don't apply to. Perhaps maybe animals may or may not be the best example of that, but for example, fencing, um, and, and the use of vinyl fencing is likely not something that, that you folks are gonna be concerned about. To the extent that this first amendment is adopted and we decide to amend in the future of our own accord and create the right to have kennels in our yard, in our yards, that's a matter of us deciding amongst a group that we can do that. But I know of no law or no right that allows us to trump, uh, the, the home rule charter, the, the rules of Coventry, um, and your, your rules and, and the town's rules in that respect would continue to govern even if we all voted to have kennels. I don't think we can override you. So I, I, I understand the concern, but I think ultimately, um, the, the town's rules and laws are gonna prove supreme and, and, and we're not gonna be able to, to fundamentally change any of that. If, if, um, the planning board was concerned about the animals provision in, in particular, I, I imagine that's something that, that my homeowners are not gonna spend a lot of time worrying about.
I think you answered the question. The, 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 the town zoning still supersedes their rules, so they can't unilaterally make changes above or more, less lenient than what the town already provides for. But they want to be able not, maybe they want to be able to have, um, larger animals than what they're currently allowed or have green fences instead of white. You know, the town, town doesn't care. That's the issue.
Understood. I just wanted that, for my own clarification, because a homeowners association, I'm not sure how that's governed, is versus to just a regular individual with a house and lot in a, in a plat.
It's a fair question. It's one I should've addressed.
Nope, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
I just, uh, talk about sixteen, the animals. In an R twenty zone, which is, um, the neighborhood where these folks are, um, you're allowed to have chickens. Their ordinance is going up and above saying they're not, they're telling their folks they're not allowed to have poultry. So, um, this, the underlying zoning ordinance is still gonna apply, um, except where they make it more strict. You know, it's up to them whether or not they wanna, I guess, they don't want fresh eggs. That's fine, you know, but, um, I get it. But you are allowed to have six chickens. No roosters in an R twenty zone.
I think you can have three dogs still, I believe. Think up to three?
Yes.
Right. So you're restricted to two, but I mean, that's your homeowners association.
Right.
I'm not here to be the judge of jury of that.
And, and that's fundamentally what we're, why, why we're here, is that there's certain things that you guys don't want to be the judge and jury on. So not, let's not clog up your, your agenda with that sort of stuff.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about number twelve lawn ornaments. You can have all the lawn jockeys you want. Doesn't bother me. Thank you for your, your answer. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
So before us is to allow them to amend? That's the question? That's why you're here before the board? That's what you're looking for the vote on?
The original declaration specifies that any amendment must be approved by you all. I'm asking for you to approve that amendment with, with section twenty-two, which allows us going forward to amend with respect to certain provisions.
Now, Mr. Kalunian, uh, the ones that are highlighted in yellow, if they were to make, wanted to make any change to those, I'm just gonna use nineteen as an example, sale of lots, that's still gonna fall under your purview.
Correct. I got that part. I was just looking for, um, unlike some of the other paperwork, I just wanted to, in the event we do approve this, we had it kinda spelled out, we covered all the bases tonight. And then just one follow-up to that. What's, where does this leave you once we've done this? Then what do you have to do? Do you still have to have another follow-up meeting, notify mortgagees, or does everything stay pretty much, is it done after this?
Um, I, I've notified the homeowners of the amendment. We've gotten their input. We've notified them of this meeting. As it stands currently, the homeowners don't have the authority to amend. You all do.
So once we're done, it's, it's done.
And then I need to record the first amended declaration in the chain of title of all the homeowners, so everyone has record notice going forward of these are the rules of our homeowners association. That's the final step.
Sounds like a pretty solid homeowners association to me, unlike some of them.
We're trying.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the amendment of the covenants and easements for Pine Ridge Homeowners Association.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we grant approval for the applicant on the proposed modifications of the HOA documents.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Kenny? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Okay, number eight-two, I will be recusing myself from this and Vice Chair Kalunian will take over for me.
Next item, eight-point-two, request by John Coluluka for a one-year extension and master plan approval previously granted for Coluluka Estates located at the intersection of Metro Drive and Diane Drive. That's assessors plat sixty, lot fifty-six, and assessors plat sixty-eight, lot one-thirty-seven point one.
Good evening, John.
Hi, good evening. John Coluluka, one Diane Drive, Coventry, Rhode Island. I'm seeking a one-year extension for my master plan approval for Coluluka Estates.
I just wanna make sure I got the right item in front of me. Okay, and I think everyone on the board's got the background on this, the history back to two thousand and seven. Been a couple of extensions. I guess it's probably just because of market conditions or-
Yes.
-for whatever reason. Okay. Does anyone on the board have any questions?
Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the grant of one-year extension.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve a one-year extension to Coluluka Estates, John Coluluka, AP sixty, lot fifty-six, and AP sixty-eight, lot three, one-thirty-seven point one, zone R twenty, Metro Drive and Diane Drive. Recommend a one-year extension of their master plan. And incorporate this letter into the, uh, my approval, my recommendation, rather.
Second. I have a second. Any, just any further discussion? One more time?
Quick question on that?
Yep.
Mr. Chair, um, we don't have to save the stipulation better on that? At all during this motion?
Uh, he incorporated this document. That's good enough for you. And these are all recorded already. All the prior decisions have been recorded and evidence records.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Thank you, John.
Thank you, board.
Wait for Mr. Flynn. Thank you, Mr. Kalunian. Okay. All right, we're at eight-three. P application for schedule of site walk for proposed office building and garage. Owner Mike Professional Tree Service Incorporated. Application, Mike Professional Tree Service, proposed thirty-by-seventy-five office building with a fifty-by-fifty garage, AP forty-four, lot one, unit three, zone industrial one at seventy-five Airport Road, unit three.
Good evening, gentlemen. My time, Alma DC Attorney for Mike Professional Tree Service.
Alma DC?
As indicated, gentlemen, the applicant is seeking to build a seventy-five-by-thirty office building with a fifty-by-fifty foot garage on that location. His intention is to operate on the Mike's Professional Tree Service operation from that location.
Okay, would you like to do any overview or you just wanna schedule the site? We're here for a site walk schedule.
Exactly, yeah. That pretty much is schedule the site. I meant the most sense.
Okay. All right, so for the site walk, I'm looking at, uh, March fourteenth, that's a Saturday, at nine o'clock.
Okay.
With a rain date of the following Saturday, March twenty-first, at nine o'clock. And that'll be right on the property at the seventy-five Airport Road.
Very good.
Okay.
Is there a mark just for the board? Is there like a convenient place to pull in? We're gonna go right off, watch the airport road?
It's a sixteen-point-three acre parcel.
Just about all the way at the end.
All the way at the end is a driveway, pull right in. It's, it'll be there. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just wanna let you know, uh, March fourteenth, I will not be able to make that site walk.
Okay. I might not be either, depending on how my surgery goes.
I'll be out of the state.
Okay, next we have, uh, eight-point-four preliminary. That's one-sixty-six Reed Avenue Platte. Owner Renee Street. Applicant Renee Street. Proposed two-lot minus subdivision with no street creation. AP seventy-two, lot fifty-one point two, zone R twenty residential, and that's one-sixty-six Reed Avenue. How you doing tonight?
Good evening, Renee Street, one-sixty-six Reed Avenue.
Hi.
Hi.
Would you just like to, uh, explain to the board what you're, what you wanna do there?
We're just, um, I'm just proposing a subdivision, just a half an acre parcel off my approximate acre and a half of land. This is the second meeting that we've been to. We've, um-
Right, you scheduled the site walk.
Yes.
We appeared at the site walk. There was some confusion because the site walk, the, the original date could cancel.
Yes, and I wasn't notified of the date change. Sorry about that. But I think everything went well on the site walk.
I, I believe so. If Mr. Anderson was there too, if he has anything to, to say on the project.
And my surveyor is here tonight as well, James Flynn, and, um, we've provided everything that you need for the preliminary, in addition to a couple of things already needed for the final.
Okay. Mr. Flynn, do you have anything to add to that before I ask the board any?
Uh, no, uh, everything's pretty clear-cut. We got soil evaluation, everything's got approved for that. There's no OWTS, uh, wasn't required, um, no variances, and-
So if you're looking at the driveway, the, the proposed lot is on the left-hand side?
The lot, the new lot would be on the left-hand side.
Left-hand side. We noticed it was a bit lower?
Yeah, yeah, it dies down. Correct.
Okay.
Yep. There's testles, um, on the slope. I don't know who's there, but, um, they show up on my plan, I think.
Yeah, I saw some tests.
Yeah, and we got, we got topo on it as well. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions from the board members?
Yep. Go ahead.
Uh, just to confirm, so you have soil evaluation, but you don't have the onsite wastewater treatment system approval yet? You gonna wait and get that later?
I'm not doing that. I'm, I'm going to just, uh, sell the land as is, and the, my understanding is the builder or, the builder will take care of that? I don't have to put a septic system in to sell the property.
Any, any, my only concern was if he sold it, he couldn't get it and all he had was-
Oh, we, well, we've done all the preliminary.
Okay, so we asked the, in other words, the soil suitability is adequate for the sale? He has the approved water tables. Okay. So, so there is, so they are able to put a proposed septic system in. And is that the same thing with, um, that it'll be the buyer then that has to retain the soil erosion permit and the domestic water service permit? Correct. Okay. And we also, um, and she has, you know, she did, as part of the preliminary application, she did have correspondence with Kent County. They did state that there was water available, so, uh, she's all set there. And, um, uh, I provided with you also the, um-
Right.
-this test bits and the, the letter from Mr. Fanoff, um, regarding the wetlands. I know there was, this, Mr. Kenny had brought that up during the pre-application phase, um, regarding the president, uh, the presence of the, uh, the RF, the unsuitable soils, how, um, the soil survey book, you know, of Rhode Island stated that there was some problem soils out there, but her biologist, you know, it's all stated in his- Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I just, um, wanted to just, and, and the only other thing, just to confirm, is, um, that was a relatively new driveway, so your plan is to sell the property but retain an easement so that you have access to your existing dwelling? For the time being, at least?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any, any other board members have any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Kenny. Oh, okay. Anybody else? All right, hearing none. Entertain a motion?
Mr. Jim, I'll make a favorable motion. To approve the two-lot minus subdivision without street creation or extension. Located at one-sixty-six Reed Ave, that's assessors plat seventy-two, lots fif, lot fifty-one point two in the R twenty zone. It's currently a one-point-four-oh-two-five acre plus or minus site. It's gonna be subdivided into two parcels. The minus subdivision will not require any dimensional variances and will result in the creation of a forty thousand-plus square foot lot and a twenty thousand-plus square foot lot. Stay with me. It's not appeared, uh, there is no potential for any further subdivision of this property. Uh, there's adequate, uh, street frontage. The proposed lot meets the, uh, accessibility for emergency service and is physically accessible from the street which it fronts. There are no scenic highways affected. Proposed lots conform to current zoning. Reed Street is classified as a major urban collector function as a local road, and this subdivision complies with the comprehensive plan. Proposed residential development is in keeping with the adjacent uses. The lots, as I mentioned, have direct frontage on Reed Street. Comprehensive plan supports rural residential development in the R twenty zone, maintain- Comprehensive plan supports rural residential development in the R twenty zone, maintaining development that does not stress town services as a goal, which states that develop implement a growth rate limitation program consistent with a town's capacity to accommodate new development, provide streets needed to support that development, including schools, roads, police, and fire protection, recreation. There's- Soil evaluations have indicated the land is suitable for an onsite wastewater treatment system, and there are no freshwater wetlands present on the subject property. Strict adherence to the guidelines set forth in any permit should ensure that there will be no negative impacts to the environment. I already mentioned it complies with zoning, traffic impacts from a single, single-family house lot should be negligible. The applicant or subsequent owner should reta-, uh, receive an onsite wastewater treatment plan, uh, onsite wastewater treatment system approval from RIDEM prior to the issuance of a building permit. Uh, soil erosion and sedimentation control plans must be obtained from this town, Coventry Town Engineer, prior to issuance of a building permit. The applicant shall be required to understand underground, underground drywells for rooftop runoff. The application should be allowed to proceed with final plan approval administratively without coming back before the board, and I would like to incorporate the Planning Director's Report into the, uh, motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Coloney, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Reyes, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Okay, next on the eight-point-five, we have a public hearing, development plan and review, minus subdivision, Howard Avenue, contractors office and garage area, owner Howard Avenue Realty LLC, applicant SNS LLC, care of Mike Sakosia. Proposed construction of a two commercial structures totaling twenty thousand square feet and subdividing the property into two parcels, AP ninety-six, lot eighteen dash one, zone industrial two, that's nine Howard Avenue, Mr. Cronin.
Mr. Flynn, Thomas Cronin, Nolan Bernero, Cora Farrar, for the owner and applicant. Your introduction doesn't leave much meat on the bone, Mr. Flynn, but, uh, I'll, I'll do my best to add a little bit.
Try.
Sure. So, uh, this is property alone, located at nine Howard Avenue, Lincoln being the closest cross street, six-point-one acres zone, industrial two. Has large existing mill buildings on the eastern side of the site, and an undeveloped western side of the site. Uh, we were here for pre-application before this board, June twenty-seventh, and, uh, went to a site walk on July sixteenth, twenty nineteen. We're here for development plan review, one public hearing, and we would prefer, if the board will agree, to proceed to final administratively. Uh, the proposed, proposal is to split the site, uh, with the eastern portion with the existing mill building being on, uh, one lot, and the western side where we plan to build the proposed development, uh, on the separate lot. The, uh, proposed, proposes to build commercial storage garages, bays, and two detached buildings with the associated parking lot and asphalt driveway. These commercial contractor bays are permitted, uh, use in the industrial two zone, and the project also meets all dimensional requirements, and no variances are required, in other words, uh, we will not be going, uh, before the zoning board. As I noted, the existing mill is to the east of the proposed, uh, commercial bay development. There's a four-unit residential condominium to the west, and, uh, to the north is the north branch of the Patuxet River. In the south is a primarily, uh, residential neighborhood. I have with me this evening Brian King from Crossman Engineering, uh, who will review the site design with the board. Uh, Mr. King has appeared before this board on many occasions, and I'd ask that he, uh, be considered an expert in regard to his testimony. Thanks. King.
Uh, good evening, my name is Brian King from Crossman Engineering. So, um, as mentioned, um, the proposal is to subdivide the property to two lots. The parcel is approximately six-point-one acres, and each lot will be three acres or a little more, so it'll be evenly, um, divided. The proposal is for, um, two buildings to be used for contractor office and garage space. Russell, if we could go to, um, sheet C five, please? Okay. So the, um, the first building, number one, is a small building, that's five thousand square feet, and it's for four units. The, um, the contractor units will be fifty by twenty-five. And the building number two is fifteen thousand square feet, which is comprised of twelve units, so it's a total of sixteen units. Each unit will have a garage door and a person door. On sheet, uh, sheet C seven, we have a site plan. And on that site plan, we show two driveway locations. There's a main driveway that is between the two buildings, and there's pavement all around the buildings for access to all of the units. The pavement is twenty-eight feet wide. We provide twenty-four parking spaces, which is, um, one and a half spaces per unit. The site lighting will be on the building. It'll be downlit, um, following the dark skies principle, so no, um, light will be extended onto the, um, adjacent properties. On this plan, we do show snow stockpile areas, um, it's a shaded area in the, the grass areas on the outside of the, um, the pavement and parking areas. And we also, in this plan set that we've prepared for permitting, we have a, an extensive site landscape plan. On sheet C, yeah, that's, uh, sheet's L one is the landscape plan. We provide, um, buffering in the back to, to the river, and we also provide street trees, and, um, an assortment of evergreen shrubs and, and flowering hedges. We provide an extensive, um, grading and drainage plan on sheet C eight. That plan shows the utilities in the stormwater design. In reference to the utilities, we have, um, a domestic water service, uh, to the buildings. There'll be a meter and a backflow system inside, um, building two, as we're showing it here. There'll be an onsite septic system, um, that's located on the right side of the plan in the back. That system is designed for, um, four-hundred-and-eighty gallons per day, which is just a, a little larger than a four-bedroom house. We have a detailed, um, stormwater management system that's designed in accordance to the DEM regulations. We have catch basins that collect the stormwater on site. From the catch basins, the stormwater is piped into, we have two underground systems in the parking lot that provide water quality and infiltration recharge, um, in accordance with the DEM requirements. We also, in front of building two, we have a, between the parking area and the roadway, we have just a small graded depression. And the purpose of that is to provide water quality, um, from the second driveway. So the main driveway is the middle of the buildings, and we have a second driveway that's proposed on the proposed property line. Um, that driveway would be shared by both parcels, um, and we do have, um, a proposed subdivision, uh, plan, conceptual subdivision plan that shows the, the easements for each parcel to use that and access. As far as permits, we do need DEM permits, um, we have submitted to DEM wetlands. We've submitted, um, for the stormwater and construction permit, Kent County Water, Coventry Fire District. So those permits will all be required and obtained, you know, prior to, um, receiving the building permit. Within our plan set, we do have soil erosion and sediment control measures, uh, for the construction process, uh, that the contractor has to follow. We also have a, a detailed, um, soil erosion and sediment control manual that we prepared, um, it's been submitted, uh, to the town and also to DEM. And we also provided a long-term operation and maintenance plan for the drainage system that we've designed. So if there's any questions, I can-
Any questions for any board members?
The, uh, steel buildings that are going to be built, are they going to be clear span, or are they going to be multi-span? Yes, no?
That's not a question for me.
I know it's not, that's just a general question.
Yeah, I'm not sure, um. We do provide some schematic, um, building footprints in the set. So what we do is, you know, any final details will be provided to the building official during the building permit process, um, so I'm sure those, those, that question will be answered at that time.
The only reason I ask is because up here for snow load for steel buildings, it matters differently. And, um, that's something that needs to be, really be looked at.
Okay.
Cause I've, I've had, um, experience with steel buildings in the military up here.
Okay.
Some good, some bad, so. Thank you.
Okay, we'll, we'll make sure that we take that recommendation, and of course, we, everything is built in accordance with the building permit requirements, state building code.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr.-
I just want to make sure that, the, so your onsite wastewater treatment system is this, um, U-shaped over here with the six-inch sewer line going into it? So it just starts at one building and just runs continuously right through the other building?
Yes, it starts at building one, and it's, it's piped, um, between the buildings, underneath the buildings. And it goes out to a septic tank.
So somehow they're going to share facilities inside the building, is that it? I was just trying to reach-
Well, the way this is set up is it's, it could be either or, um, it could be, um, a, a central bathroom for, for the building, or the way it's set up here is each, each unit could have their own bathroom, I'm not sure if that's been decided yet, as far as the interior details. But it's set up so you could have either or.
It looks like you have five drains from the centerline of the building, on, on the building to the right, and only, there's really none shown, but perhaps one on the other building, so I would just carry it.
Right, so the, the smaller building, um, those are four units, so, um, the, the bigger building is, has units back to back. So, so I guess that's why there's, there's that, all those individual pipes, but on the smaller building, that one pipe could actually service each of the units.
But all this flowing through one six-inch pipe down to the ISDS, and you believe it's been sized correctly to meet DEM standards?
Yes, it has, um, the, the pipe slope outside and inside are in accordance with the building.
I, I don't have, I don't have, um, a, any knowledge of what the requirements offer for commercial properties versus, uh, bedrooms, number of bedrooms in a residential dwell, that's, that's the only reason I ask. And then, do you have information, or is this for Mr. Cronin, as far as what's going to happen to the other, on the, on the other lot, that may or may not be? My question pertains to how much of the existing building is going to be demolished, if any?
The, um, there is a small portion, yes, there is a small portion of that existing building that's proposed to be removed. The majority of the building, and the portion of the building that is at the intersection of Howard and Lincoln, will remain.
I'm concerned, I, the one that strikes me, and it looks like perhaps there's a conflict with the building closest to Howard Avenue, which is, from what, from this picture right here, this aerial photograph would be this little white, uh, white rooftop building. I was looking at the building to the, to the rear, closest to the north branch of the Patuxet River, which, um, if, if I drove by today, it looked like there were two, uh, white garage doors that you can see from Lincoln Avenue that are starting to collapse, and the entire roof is, is like-
Yeah.
collapsing. Is that going to be removed?
That's one of them that's going to be removed.
Okay, that's all I wanted to confirm.
Yeah, that's in-
That certainly is, um-
Very poor shape, yes.
Would be an improvement right out of the gate, thank you.
Anybody else before I open up public hearing? Okay, just to let everybody know how public hearing works, I will open up public hearing, everybody will have the opportunity to talk. Uh, Mr. Cronin will be, have his yellow pad out, he's already has it out, he'll be taking notes of all the questions. They will answer them, if you have any more questions after they answer them, you can certainly come back up and ask more questions. So, I will entertain a motion to open up public hearing.
Motion, open public hearing.
I have a motion by Mr. Mattson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Reyes.
Kenny.
Mr. Kenny, sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Public hearing is now open, uh, anybody wants to come up, I'm going to start on the left, just raise your hand, if you want to come up and speak, come on up. Just say your name and your address for the record, please.
Good evening, Chairman Flynn. Good evening. My name is Stephanie McCaffrey, twenty Lincoln Avenue. I'm hoping that I can ask some questions. My first question would be if a traffic volume study was done regarding this project?
He's going to answer them at the end.
Oh, okay.
He's right, I'm all down behind you.
Okay. And my second question, you referenced the number of parking spaces, are they compliant with the current regulatory guidelines, or is a waiver being considered? My third question is, how will this affect, if at all, the town sewer installation plan? And will it accelerate the installation of sewers for the neighboring community? My fifth question is, and I'm not sure if you can answer, um, if similar projects have been done in the town, in residential neighborhoods, has the proper, uh, property value been affected, and is there any data available to review? And as related to noise level, um, will they be obligated to comply with current regulatory guidelines? And, um, when will the noise commence from the first truck and to closure, uh, each evening? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the left-hand side? Okay, on the right-hand side, anybody else? Come on up, sir.
Uh, my name's Mike Martin, uh, my address is ninety-seven Howard Avenue. I noticed just recently that they posted gross weight limits for the, uh, Lincoln Bridge. And I'm just curious to know what the maximum is as far as vehicles or equipment that, uh, are going to be, you know, parked or, uh, kept at this new facility. And if they have to, uh, circumvent that bridge, if they're going to be going up and down Howard Avenue, just exactly, you know, with all, whatever the weight is going to be, what, uh, extent that's going to have on that street? Because it's in pretty poor condition as it is, so, those are the only two things I was really interested in.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Hey, hearing none, Mr. Cronin, would you answer those questions?
Do my best. The, uh, beginning, um, with Ms. McCaffrey's comments, uh, she asked whether a traffic study has been completed. Uh, no formal traffic study has been completed, uh, of this property. The parking spaces were, uh, her next, uh, question, and those are compliant, and no waiver, uh, has been, uh, requested. The town sewer plan, um, uh, we've dealt with this on a couple of occasions before this board with various projects, and it's a great question, uh, but it's not one that we ever have a clear answer to. Um, so, there's no direct connection between this project and any change in the town sewer plan. Of course, they take into consideration the development as it occurs in town, as they make their plans, but, uh, there's no direct correlation between this application or the proposed use and any acceleration. And, and in addition, that there's no known correlation between that, any acceleration and how that would affect the neighboring, uh, community. I think the best reference would be to, uh, have Ms. McCaffrey and any concerned neighbor, uh, review the sewer plan as it currently exists, and, uh, try to, try to extrapolate from there. Um, certainly, this is not going to be a high-volume water use, uh, proposal, um, and it wouldn't cause- wouldn't cause the sewer commission any immediate concern. So I don't anticipate any change in that regard. We're not putting in, you know, drug manufacturing or anything like that require some big changes, and our application doesn't consider that. There's no current information available to me how a project like this would affect neighboring property values, although Mr. King noted that we have submitted a landscape plan which buffers the property with vegetative buffering and setbacks from the, from the neighboring properties and the Patuxent River. So that, those are the kind of things that we have control over and that we implement to preserve the character of the surrounding neighborhood and to insulate any project from the neighbors and keep their concerns in mind. Those are the tools that we have available, and those are the tools that we used in this project. Her last two comments are, I think, related with regard to the current sound regulations and what the anticipated hours of operation might be. So any, any proposal even in existing use is subject to the Towne-Cavendish Sound Regulations. We haven't asked for a waiver of anything like that, and if we did ask for one, we'd be unlikely to get it, right? So not even a consideration we'll of course comply with the Towne-Cavendish Sound Regulations. And the, and the hours of operation are, these are spaces that will be rented. We'll have to come up with some rules for the tenants, obviously, as to when they might operate, and if the board has any concerns in that regard, we'd be willing to listen to their commentary. We don't have any tenants yet, so there's no one to really complain about any rules that we might set out. With regard to Mr. Martin's comments, as I just finished my comments with regard to Ms. McCaffrey's questions, the spaces are intended to be rented to businesses. What the gross weight of those trucks will be, I don't know at this time. They will have to comply with the state and local rules with regard to weight limits and truck traffic in those, in those regards. And so those, the limitations on what the weight of the trucks will be, will be the same as they are now. Whatever can travel down Howard or Lincoln now will be the same limitation then. I don't really have any comment on the condition of Howard Avenue, other than it's a, it's a good idea to contact your town councilman if you have problems with the road, or you're concerned about the condition of a road, and that's, has proven effective when those questions have been raised in the past before this board. So those are my responses. I would note that in regard to Ms. McCaffrey's first question with regard to the traffic study, this is not a high-intensity traffic use, and it falls below the threshold of traffic, an automatic request for a traffic commission study, and that's why one has not been completed. So if the board has any questions with regard to my responses, I'd be happy to answer those now. If there's any follow-ups, I'll continue with my note-taking.
Go ahead. I just wanted to clarify. So if I understand though, this is currently the entire property, everything that you're using is currently zoned industrial?
Industrial two.
Which is manufacturing two, right? So theoretically, there could be a manufacturer, not for these guys, I'm just saying.
Theoretically, yeah.
Because I remember when it was the candy, you know, it had the candy thing, so with employees coming and going. So, I mean, at least from where I sit, it would seem, and I just, tell me if you agree, that the, the number of units that are proposed, and this is basically a tradesman's building, for lack of a better, a better term, should not generate that level of, of traffic.
That's right. We're not, not even anticipating one employee, you know, so it'll be...
Storage.
It'll be storage, right. So yeah, and it doesn't, it didn't, doesn't hit the thresholds of the number of units or anticipated traffic that would normally require that, that traffic study. It's a pretty, traffic-wise, a low-intensity use.
And again, just to further respond to Ms. McCaffrey's question with regards to the sewer program, I mean, I'm just going to throw it out there. This is designed, and I asked the engineer if he thought he met the criteria for this size building and this type of use. It's 480, 480 gallons per day, is that what you said? A four-bedroom house is?
Four sixty.
Four sixty. So the number of commercial units is barely going to generate more water than, than a four-bedroom residential dwelling, so why would the town think it would be in their best interest to stop piping sewers down there at this point? You have to cross the river. I mean, I'm just venturing a guess, but take it, take it at what, you know, that was my train of thought.
Anybody else on the board have any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Who, when these businesses go in, pretty much, it's not just a bay for like, say, holding, holding cars or trucks, right? Somebody could actually open up a wood shop and run a wood shop out of these bays. Is that accurate? Whatever they want to put in there, they can bring in machinery, or is this basically just holding cars and equipment and dormant?
So they're designed, they're designed as garage-style, right? So it's anticipated, at least in, in the market projection, that they'll be used to park trucks and, and leave equipment in, in inventory. But I don't think there's any bar to any commercial activity within the zoning regulations of the Towne-Cavendish in an I-2 zone in these spaces.
Right.
So that, I think there could be some small business like woodworking. We could fit in this area.
Yeah, I'm just getting on. I know they'd be subject to, you know, noise levels and without permits and parameters. I was just also wondering if, who, like, who vets this or polices if a business comes in with, I don't know, landscaping business, and they have chemicals for lawns or, or even chemicals for anything? How is that, like, policed as far as hazardous or non-hazardous, and if it is at all? I don't know if I, you know, if I'm Glenn's Chemicals and I back in with a flatbed truck and I start off in little barrels, that's about, that's my question.
So the legal concern, it would be with the DEM. So if, if somebody was using that kind of material or storing in excess more than a residential amount of gas or fuel on site, you have to register with the Department of Environmental Management. They regulate how much you can store, how you store it, you know, the labels on, on the containers. Now, if somebody's doing that illegally, I don't, I don't know who would police that.
I don't know if the owner or the, the rent, the rental agency would, I don't know. I just thought I posed a question.
Certainly, I think the landlord would be concerned if it was brought to their attention, but there's no, there's no policing other than, you know, those kinds of things are required to be registered with the Department of Environmental Management, and they regulate how they're stored.
Thank you. Anybody, any other questions from the board?
Sorry, just one more follow-up, and I think this is probably for Mr. Crossman. As far as I know, the noise ordinance or the operations would have to be, what, after 7:00 AM in the morning? I'm not sure in an I-2 zone.
Yeah, correct. No, and even in all zones, they have to comply with the industrial performance standards established by the zoning board, and I believe it is 7:00 AM.
And nine o'clock at night?
Excuse me?
Nine at night or seven? I can't remember.
I don't want to tell you what it is, because I'm not really sure off the top of my head.
But it's available if they look online or in your office.
Absolutely. And they would have to conform with those, and if they didn't, they could be subject to some sort of notification of violation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody from the audience would like to come up and comment on, come on up. Just your name and address again, please.
Mike Martin, 97 Howard Avenue. As an afterthought, there's a good-sized portion of the existing building that has been deteriorating significantly over a number of years. Granted, they brought a good portion of it up to snuff, but this one is, is a real eyesore in our neighborhood. And I know it was mentioned that a portion of it is going to be taken down, but I was just wondering how much of the part of the building that is just in terrible shape is going to be eliminated.
Thank you. Mr. Cronin, I know we talked about that at the sidewalk, but...
So I'll, I would ask that Mr. King respond to that question.
Okay, thank you.
If he can. It's tough with the area.
I think for the most part, the, well, can I walk up to the screen and point? Might be easier.
Yeah.
So this, this building right here, one of them that is wanting to be removed, and that's in very, very poor shape, is the one I was talking about. And a portion of this building right here will be removed as well. The proposed property line is just like this top of the location. This, this part of the building that I believe is currently in use will be, this part and this part.
Right, and those are the two areas to me that look so blighted. It'll be an improvement when those two buildings are taken down. The one in the back is just about falling down.
Yes.
And the one on the side, I believe at the sidewalk, they said they were going to take that down. It's got broken windows and, so really, the good, the building that is in good shape, standing right now, is going to remain. Will certainly be an improvement to the site as it stands now, in my, in my opinion. Anybody else would like to come up before I close public hearing? Okay, seeing none, take a motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
I have a motion by Mr. Mattson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kalunian. Any discussion before I close public hearing? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Any questions from the board before I entertain a motion? Okay, there'll have to be two separate motions on this. One for the lot subdivision and one for the DPR, right, Mr. Solicitor?
That is correct.
Okay, so it'll be two separate motions on this project. Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Let's start with the development plan and review. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the plan for development as presented in accordance with Article 16 of the Cavendish zoning ordinance for Accessus Platte 96, Lot 18 dash one. Let's see here. I need to add anything in there. Yeah, I just want to make sure it matches that, not the other one.
Yep.
The stipulations associated with this approval will be that the, it's conditional upon the applicant obtaining all of the necessary Rhode Island DEM permits, Kent County Water Authority and municipal permits prior to receiving final approval for the project. The applicant shall receive approval from the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management for the installation of the onsite wastewater treatment system prior to the issuance of a building permit. The applicant shall submit a record plan when the time comes, assuming that we approve the proposed two-lot subdivision. And I think the last three all pertain to the other one, so I think I'm going to wait. Right?
Okay.
All right, that's my motion on the first. And I'll incorporate the planning director's report into the motion. Okay, I have a motion on the DPR from Mr. Kalunian. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
A second by Mr. Rayes. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries on the DPR. Now we'll have a motion on the two-lot minus subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the subdivision of the, of the subject property identified as Accessus Platte 96, Lot 18 dash one into two lots in accordance with the plans that have been submitted. The, again, the record plat for recording of the proposed two-lot subdivision shall be submitted to the planning office and recorded. The applicant shall be allowed to proceed administratively with final approval, and the applicant shall submit a copy of any deed descriptions to accompany both the proposed access easements. Also, overall, this project is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. The project generally consistent with a comprehensive plan. The proposed use is permitted in the industrial two zoning district. The project will not have a significant impact to the environment in that it will require multiple permits from DEM. The proposed project meets the dimensional standards of the zoning ordinance, and it will, does not appear to have a detrimental impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. And I will again incorporate the planning director's report into my motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Kalunian on the subdivision. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mattson. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, both motions carried.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, number nine, 9.1. We have a recommendation to town council, proposed zone change for Tallwoods Estates, major subdivision. Proposed zone change from an R-20 residential to a planned unit development, PUD, AP-50, Lot 11, 17 Tallwoods Drive. Recommendation as provided in RIGL 45 dash 24 dash 27 ET. Does any, would you like to?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This one, you, you all remember, you heard this application. You approved the master plan decision of this application. As part of that master plan decision, you also made a favorable recommendation to that town council for the approval of the PUD zone change. However, at that time, a request for the change, zone change, had not been made to the town council at that time. So Mr. Cronin made that request, I believe it was on or about January 30, made a request to the town council for the zone change. At that time, he submitted that application to the clerk's office. The clerk at that time distributed that to the town council for an approval and to the planning commission for a recommendation. So now, basically, what I'm asking you people to do is just reaffirm your recommendation that you had granted previously when it was approved. So you're not, all you're going to do is strictly be reaffirming the motion to approve, make a favorable recommendation on the zone change. Mr. Kalunian, you'd like to ask me a question?
So you're going to ratify?
Yeah, smart question. Can we change our mind? No, I'm only kidding.
I believe you can. So basically, if you, if you wanted to know how you voted last time, I, I have them all right here.
It's basically like a ratification of, of the...
It's not, I would call it not a ratification. I'd call it more of a reaffirmation.
Okay.
Yeah, what, what it, what it has to do with, it's, it's the decision, this eve, what you're doing this evening is aligning the request up to the statute, so that anyone looking at this, if they say, did the applicant follow the statute, did the planning commission follow the statute, everyone can answer in the affirmative, yes. So it's a, it's a little belt and suspenders, and then more suspenders.
We kind of did the cart before the horse, right?
Exactly.
We approved the, approved it before it was requested, by the town council.
No, you made the recommendation before it was requested.
Right.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the recommendation to town... Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the recommendation to town council for proposed zone change for Tallwoods.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for a favorable recommendation to the town council for a zone change to planned unit development for Assessor's Plat 50, Lots 11 and 23 in the R-20 zone located Tallwoods Drive, Reguwood Drive, and Reservoir Road and Sharon Drive for the 62-unit condominium development that was before us.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Kalunian, though I have a second. Second by Mr. Kenny. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, we have 9.2. We have another recommendation to the town council, 2020-21 capital improvement budget. This is a recommendation. And in your packet, you, you see the capital improvements. And this is basically a recommendation to town council. They will be making the decision on how the capital improvements are spent, spent and in what order. It just has to meet the comp plan, correct?
Right, that's all. What we have here is, we have three budgets that were, three capital improvement budgets that were presented by three different departments of the town. I believe there is one from the Department of Public Works, one from the Parks and Rec, as well as one from the school department. So, what they do, they, they project out a five-year capital improvement budget, what they're looking to spend on capital improvements over the next five years. So, basically, what your role is here is to decide whether, what they're asking for, does it conform to the comprehensive plan? That's it. You're not saying, yes, let's give them the 1.25 million to pave Black Rock Road. You know.
And based on, based on the notes that you have in the plan, it's your opinion that Public Works Department, Parks and Recreation, and the school department, their proposed capital improvement plans all do in fact comply with, with the town's comprehensive community plan?
Correct.
Thank you. I'd like to make a favorable recommendation to approve, or make a recommendation to the town council to approve the FY 2020-2021 capital improvements program as presented here tonight. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Kalunian. I have a second by Mr. Kenny. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Recommendation is approved.
Okay, before we adjourn, Mr. Chairman, I don't know, did anyone else get this funny color?
That's not on the agenda for discussion. I would rather not get into that right now.
Well, I didn't wanna get into it. What I was gonna suggest, if someone felt it warranted discussion, maybe we should put it on the agenda for executive session considering it pertains to.
I think, I think it would be appropriate if somebody explained to you what's going on and what those packets meant. I, I do think that would be appropriate, and I'll see if, what I can do about making that happen.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Mattson, second by Mr. Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
See adjourned.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Mr. Kenny? Mr. Kenny?
Tomorrow.
Microphones, Mr. Kenny, please.